Good evening. I now call the March 11th, 2020 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Reeves, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry, here. Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Please let the minutes reflect that all board members are present to include our student liaison officer, Mr. Joseph Bowers. Moving on to the invocation, I'll now turn it over to Mr. Bowers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Smith. Luckily today, I know what day of the week it is. I'm still working on the time, so a sense of the time change, but other than that, I'm doing wonderful. Tonight, we have Mr. Elijah Pope, who is a fourth grade student at Machin Elementary School, and he will be leading us in the pledge, in the Pledge of Allegiance, or in the invocation. So, Mr. Pope, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, board members and distinguished guests. This evening, I will be reading a leadership poem entitled "Nobility" by Alice Carey. True worth is in being, not seeming, in doing each day that goes by, some little good, not in dreaming, of great things to do by and by, for whatever men say in their blindness, and spite the fancies of youth. There is nothing so kingly's kindness, and nothing so royal's truth.
That was great, Elijah. You're a great public speaker. Elijah told me that he actually routinely speaks to his classmates in his school. So, I told him it's wonderful that he's starting off at such a young age with public speaking and speaking to others, because it's something that, you know, you're gonna have to do in your adult life. So, that's awesome.
Absolutely.
So, there's a couple of questions for you. So, what's your favorite subject in school?
Well, my favorite subject is math.
Math, okay. I'm not much of a math person. That's, once they started adding letters, I couldn't wrap my head around it. So, what's, uh, what are you trying to do when you grow up, if you know that yet?
Well, I want to be a robotics engineer.
Robotics engineer, awesome. So, we need a lot of those in the growing age, and a lot of engineers that make good money too. So, that's awesome. Well, thank you, Elijah. It's, also, if there's anybody here that's supporting Elijah, would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you all very much.
Would you like to introduce him, Elijah?
Yes.
Okay.
My aunt Marlene, my mom, my dad, my principal, and my assistant principal.
Good job. Thank you so much. Any comments from board members? I know when you said robotics, that got you going, Ms. Henry.
Yes. I just saw a presentation about the Robotics First Competition, which is happening, and it's happening at the Hampton Coliseum this year, so you'll have to go watch it.
Exactly.
We'll have to get you that information. But it's, uh, a lot of my students who took that program are doing great things now. One is a professor at Columbia University. One went off to college, and as his off-quarter, he was hired by a robotics company and put up in his own condo as a freshman in Atlanta. And then he went back to studying robotics some more on the on-quarter at college, because it's a very wonderful experience and skill. So, keep at it.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here from the Machin family who's here to support Elijah? Well, why don't you all just stand again and let us give you a big hand? Thank you so much. And thank you for lending him to us tonight. We appreciate it. Before I move to the next item of business, item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda, I'd just like to point out that because of a couple of issues, our school board clerk, Ms. Bowers, is not able to attend tonight. And our school board deputy clerk, who takes her place when she's not able to attend, is also not able to attend tonight. But we're in good hands, because our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, will be handling that portion. And we also have our executive director of Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Gore, who always steps up to the plate to handle other things we need. So, I wanted to say that before we moved into the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Are there any questions from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Reeves, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
And Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, as we move to recognitions, I'd like to call on our executive director of Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Gore, and she will be joined by our vice chair, Mr. Joe Kilgore.
And Madam Chair, just for clarification, we're just gonna keep it on that top recognition, because I can't be in two places at once to keep bumping the computer as we go through them.
Oh, you can't?
No.
Okay.
I wish I could clone myself some days.
I'm surprised.
All right. But thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of our school board, Dr. Smith, Superintendent, members of our Hampton Schools family. Tonight, we have several recognitions to bring to the board. Very exciting evening. And we are going to start by asking one of our student athletes, Ms. Brianna Romney, to join us on the stage. And we're gonna let you come up and stand beside us, and we're gonna brag on you just a little bit. Come on up. All right. So, it is our pleasure this evening to recognize Brianna Romney, a senior at Kickitaine High School, who won the Virginia High School League Class V State Championship in the 50 freestyle with a time of 23.48 seconds. I think that deserves a big round of applause. Am I correct? This is not your first win? No, it is not your first win. Last year, she brought home first place in the 50 freestyle with a time of 23.38 seconds. And in addition to that, her first-place win this year, she has placed second in the state in the 100 freestyle with a time of 51.23 seconds. Let's give her another round of applause. And I do enjoy swimming, but there is no way I could keep up with you. So, what an accomplishment. So, Brianna is coached by Coach Stickle and Coach Smith, who I believe are here tonight with us. So, thank you so much. And would you all like to say a few words about Brianna before we proceed?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say it's been my honor and privilege to be able to coach Brianna for four years now. I'm gonna really miss her next year as she graduates. And in case y'all haven't noticed, she has on her Carolina blue. She is, she has signed a letter of intent with University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. And I'd like to also mention that she is a three-time All-American.
I've known Brianna since she was that big. So, anyway, it's definitely an honor for me. On behalf of the Chair, Ms. Cherry, the Hampton School Board, and the Superintendent, Dr. Smith, please accept this certificate of recognition for this outstanding accomplishment. And I'll read the certificate. Certificate of Achievement from Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Brianna Romney, Kickitaine High School, Virginia High School League Class V State Championship in the 50 freestyle. We're very proud of you and for your commitment to your education and your sport. It certainly takes a great deal of time and effort to not only be the best in your sport, but manage your time and prioritize. We wish you very much success after graduation, and let's give Brianna another great big round of applause.
UNC Chapel Hill? I had the opportunity to visit there a few weeks ago. It's a beautiful campus, so.
The southern part of heaven. That's why it's Carolina blue.
So, we enjoy. But before Brianna and our two coaches leave the stage, we'd like to recognize any important guests that are out in our audience here that are supporting her. So, would any family members, teachers, or administrators please stand to be recognized? Is that mom? So, mom, big kudos to you, because with swimming, we know that those are some early morning practices sometimes. So, thank you, and thank you. You all can have a seat. All right. Next, we would like to recognize Ms. Kate Maxlow, our Director of Innovation and Professional Learning. So, Ms. Maxlow, would you please join us on stage? They're clapping, and they don't even know what they're clapping for yet. They're just so excited to see ya. So, back on February 18th in Richmond, Ms. Maxlow is recognized as the recipient of the Virginia Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, VASCD's Leadership Award. This award is presented annually, but it is only presented to one individual, one Virginia educator, for outstanding leadership in teaching and learning. And Kate was that one individual. Let's give her a round of applause. I'm still up. I didn't realize I was still up. Or I stole your part, didn't I? Would you like to steal my part? Oh, okay. That was on a roll. All right. So, Ms. Maxlow has certainly shown outstanding leadership in teaching and learning. Our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. John Cagiano, shares that Kate is a visionary leader whose passion for curriculum instruction and assessment has resulted in a positive impact throughout Hampton City Schools' classrooms. The work she has been leading in the area of curriculum redesign continues to be well-received by our teachers and serves as an exemplar for all other school divisions. The impact this work is having on student engagement through a focus on relevance truly serves as an example of what a guaranteed and viable curriculum should represent. And you may be asking, what exactly is that work? Well, Kate has led the efforts in organizing the Division's Professional Development Program that has helped to build staff capacity across the division, as well as created high-quality banks of essential questions and understandings as part of an initiative to expand the use of performance-based assessments. These resources have become invaluable to the practice of the Division's 1,500-plus teachers and have resulted in a paradigm shift in teaching and learning throughout the school division. In addition to this work translating into positive student achievement gains, it has also led to increased teacher retention rates for Hampton City Schools, which we know is extremely important. And not only is she doing this great work right here in Hampton, but VASCD credits her willingness to share that work freely with others, which further demonstrates her leadership. And Mr. Kilgore, I'm not gonna steal your part, so I'm gonna let you come on.
On behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Smith, please accept this certificate of recognition that reads, Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Kate Maxlow, Virginia Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development's Leadership Award. We are thankful for your commitment to innovation and excellence and that your work tiresly to ensure all of our teachers have access to quality professional development that not only meets their interests and needs, but also engages our students. We are fortunate to have Ms. Maxlow as part of our Hampton City School family. Let's give Kate Maxlow a big round of applause.
And I would like to add one other piece. You know, a lot of us have the opportunity to work with Kate in our classrooms and at the school administration level, but her willingness to be Johnny-on-the-spot and help out at any point is just fantastic. Even I was pulling on her today, saying, "Help!" for a piece. And we truly appreciate you and your willingness to be a team player. So, before we let you leave the stage, though, I saw one individual here that's representing you tonight, and that would be your son, correct? I'm gonna make you stand, so we can give you a round of applause. You have a pretty awesome mom. And if there are any others in the audience that are here supporting, I know Dr. Cagiano's here. If you would stand to be recognized. All right. We're gonna go ahead and move ahead on our recognitions. So, at this time, we'd like to invite Amadite, Chuck Baumgartner, and Beth Leatherwood to the stage. All right. So, this next recognition comes from the Jamestown 2019 State Commemoration Committee, as they have awarded the Outstanding Partner Award to Hampton City Schools. So, Amadite's our Social Studies Curriculum Lead, Chuck Baumgartner, our Elementary Teacher Specialist, as well as Beth Leatherwood, our Secondary Teacher Specialist, are joining us tonight to accept the Outstanding Partner Award on behalf of the exceptional efforts of our HCS Social Studies Teachers. So, this award was presented in recognition of Hampton City Schools being the only school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia to have 100% of our schools officially designated as 2019 Commemoration Schools. So, I think that deserves a huge.
Earning this distinction was not easy. Each school had to commit to participating in year-long service projects and learning activities focused on the commemoration three themes, diversity, democracy, and opportunity. Each school was very creative in how they made these themes relevant for students. Students taught about diversity by commemorating the arrival of the first African-Americans in 1619 at Fort Monroe. They created murals and displayed, and displays highlighting how much rich culture and lasting contributions have made our country a better place in which to live. Democracy was taught by holding mock elections, election debates, and voter registration drives. Opportunity was taught by holding canned food and clothing drives to help those less fortunate in our community. On behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Smith, please accept our thanks and appreciation in leading this great work on behalf of our teachers and young people. And at this time, I'd like to share the recognition from the Jamestown 2019 State Commemoration Committee, and it reads, "American Evolution: Virginia to America, 1619 to 2019. Democracy, Diversity, Opportunity: City of Hampton Schools Education Partner Award."
And I know we have several individuals in our audience. So, if we have any Social Studies Teachers, please stand to be recognized. Any family members or administrators? Thank you all so much. We have one more recognition this evening, and it spotlights our Science Department. So, we've gone from Innovation Professional Learning to Social Studies, and now onto Science. So, we've got some great things going on in Hampton City Schools. So, at this time, there are several individuals I'd like to ask to join us on the stage. We're gonna start with Venecia Farrell, our K-12 Science Curriculum Leader, along with Shannon Pullman, our Science Teacher Specialist. And we have some lead STEM 360 teachers here this evening. I don't know if everyone has been able to join us, but I'm gonna go ahead and read your names just to make sure that we're giving everybody recognition. We have Michelle Comets from Phoenix, Jennifer Thomason from Bryan, Marcy Miles from Cooper, Shay Finney from Burbank, Janef McKenny from Armstrong, Amanda Ross from Smith, Dr. Janice Richison from Andrews, Karen Brace from Booker, is it Audrey Lavoy, Lavoy? Audrey Lavoy from Forest? Didn't want to say that correctly. Taylor Thomas Perkins from Andrews, Wendy Christ from Langley, and Lauren McCray from Tucker Caps.
Due to the hard work of these individuals, the STEM 360 program was chosen to be showcased as a program that works by the Virginia Mathematics and Science Coalition. Hampton City Schools staff was recognized at an awards luncheon on February 18th and presented a poster showcasing their program.
And we're gonna tell you a little bit more about the program. I know the board is quite knowledgeable on the STEM 360 program, as Ms. Farrell has presented information several times in the past. However, for our viewers, let me explain just a little bit about the program. The STEM 360 program was conceived as a way to put into practice, as well as holistically assess years of research findings showing that STEM learning derives not from a single source, schools or visits to science centers, but rather from multiple sources, such as out-of-school free-choice experiences, parental support, and mentoring-type support from other key adults. So, the STEM 360 program was designed as a multi-model ecosystem approach to enhancing STEM learning. The study represented a joint effort by the Virginia Air and Space Center and the Institute for Learning Innovation, in collaboration with three Hampton Roads-area school divisions, Hampton, of course, Newport News, and Suffolk, along with a team of other free-choice learning organizations such as iFly Virginia Beach, Topgolf, East Coast Polytechnic Institute, Norfolk Botanical Gardens, Virginia Zoo, and Virginia Seafood Agricultural Research and Extension Center, Virginia Tech. STEM 360 is currently in its fourth year as a program. Cohort 1 occurred during the 2016 to 2018 school years, and it was repeated due to its success. And Cohort 2 began in the fall of 2018, is currently going on to date. Venecia Farrell and Shannon Pullman serve as the points of contact for Hampton City Schools. They have worked with the Virginia Air and Space Center to design each field experience and pre- and post-school visits, conduct test runs at each free-choice learning site prior to students visiting, and to assist in the creation of the student growth measures. And I can say personally, I know how much work goes into that, as I've had the opportunity to kind of tag along on a few trips, especially ones that the Daily Press have gone ahead and spotlighted. And I had the opportunity last year to go to the Virginia Living, not Living, the Aquarium, and kind of get a behind-the-scenes view, which was very interesting for our students.
On behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Smith, please accept this certificate of recognition that reads as follows. Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Ms. Farrell, STEM 360 program, the Virginia Mathematics and Science Coalition, 2020 Programs That Work. The award reads, "Virginia Mathematics and Science Coalition, Programs That Work 2020, Presented to STEM 360 Student Programs, Virginia Air and Space Center, Hampton City Schools, Newport New City Schools, and Suffolk Public Schools, in recognition of the significant work involved in the design and implementation of the program and its impact on STEM education." And also, we'd like to thank you for your work around this program. The board clearly knows the benefits of experimental learning and real-world applications, and these educational experiences, there's so much more than a traditional field trip for our students. Let's give everyone up here another big round of applause.
Mr. Kilgore's a lot taller than me. If there's anyone in the audience that is here to represent our great leaders, would you please stand to be recognized? We've got some family members, and teachers, and administrators. And thank you for all that you do. It truly is very exciting. Thank you, and congratulations. Madam Chair, that concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gore, and thank you, Mr. Kilgore, for assisting. Before everybody leaves, I just want to say that, you know, in this school division, we are truly blessed to even have these kinds of recognitions. This is not done in every school division. We've got everybody from Brianna, who just left out of the door, literally swimming laps around everybody in the state. And then, of course, you have Kate Maxlow, who does everything well, but to be recognized for it is a feat in itself. And then, of course, how can you not talk about our Social Studies Department? It is known, not only in this area, but throughout the state of Virginia. They always do exciting things. And then, our Science Department just checks all the boxes. You all have so many experiences for our children. So, I can just say tonight, Dr. Smith, we were clicking on all cylinders. Would you not say?
Absolutely. I agree, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you again. And thank you again, Elijah. Moving on with tonight's agenda, we go to item three, which is the Consent Agenda. It consists of item 3.01 Personnel Report Number 20-05, 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of February 19, 2020, 3.03 Certification of the Closed Session of February 19, 2020, and 3.04 Receipt of Donations. And as I've explained in the past, the receipt of the donations piece speaks to any organization or individual who gives an item to a school or an office exceeding the amount of $500 and above. This board has to vote on it. Does it motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Second.
It has been properly moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Dr. Mason that we approve tonight's Consent Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Reeves, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving to item four, Hearing of Any Delegations or Presentation of Any Written Communications or Petitions Regarding the Superintendent's Proposed FY 2020-2021 School Operating Budget. Have you received any, Ms. Reeves?
I have not.
I have not either. We will move on to item five, which is Deliberation.
Point of order, simply put on the record that you opened and then closed the public hearing, and there were no speakers.
Okay.
It's the same as this, but this is the public hearing that was advertised.
Okay. We are now in the public hearing.
Correct.
There are no speakers.
That is correct.
So, we can move forward.
Bang your gavel.
I will bang. Moving forward, okay.
It is closed.
See? Gotta have that legal person over here. I'd love it. Now, moving into Deliberation.
As I do with Dr. Smith. We banged.
Oh, yes. We heard that. We heard that last week. Exactly. Okay. Deliberation.
Ms. Reeves, I had moved on.
I had moved on to Deliberation. Okay. Item 5.01, Super. Item 5.01 Superintendent's Proposed Budget 2021. Item 5.02 Student Fees for 2020-21. Is there any conversation from any board members regarding either? Yes, Ms. Henry?
I'm just happy to have the printed page because it's really hard to do the line-by-line stuff on the screen. It upsets me, and I can't mark on it, so I thank you for this.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? Any other comments from board members regarding student fees for 2020-2021? Dr. Smith, seems like you and your team laid it all out, and we don't have a lot of questions. I think this, seriously, I think the reason is because the questions were pretty much ask-and-answer to front when we held our two-by-twos and our one-on-ones with board members. I can say that Dr. Smith and his staff were very good about handling all the questions that board members had, and so that's why we're at the place where we find ourselves tonight. I would like to say this, as we move out of Deliberation. You will notice that in the information you have received, it says that we will have a budget hearing, another public hearing, on next week, which will be March the 18th. And then, the schedule called for March 25th for this board to vote on that budget. However, with the emphasis that has been placed on the coronavirus and the fact that we really aren't hearing a lot from the public in terms of this budget, this board will go ahead and hold the public hearing that we said we were going to hold on March 18th. However, this board more than likely will look to vote on the budget at that time as Just wanted to say that. Now, moving on. Item Number Six, Items for Action. They include 6.01 Resolution for VSBA Business Honor Roll, State Farm Insurance, 6.02 2020-2021 School Calendar, and 21-2022 Planning Calendar. Do I hear motion?
Madam Chair, we probably ought to vote on these separately.
That can work, yes.
I move that we approve the resolution adding State Farm Insurance to the Business Honor Roll for VSBA.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved by Ms. Henry and double-seconded by Mr. Samuels and Mr. Kilgore here that we move forward with the resolution for VSBA Honor Roll to include State Farm Insurance. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Reeves, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Motion carries. That's aye. Motion carries. Item 6.02 2020-2021 School Calendar and 2021-2022 Planning Calendar. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve the 2020-2021 School Calendar and the 2021-2022 Planning Calendar. Is there any discussion by board members? Yes, Ms. Smith?
Just for clarity, I just want to remind that last week, we talked about it and just mentioned that there was that Rosh Hashanah holiday that had been brought up, and there has been no concern from the community, and it is just a planning calendar. So I think it's good to move forward, but just to have that in notice if it does come up, you know, as we firm that up for the following year.
I think that's a good point, to just keep that in the rearview mirror. Okay. Any other discussion from board members?
The committee did say that we're, the planning calendar is subject to a possible adjustment with regard to everybody's new thinking about, since we're allowed to have some flexibility about Labor Day start and the Bush Gardens Law that used to be on the books. So we're set for next year, and then we're sort of set for the planning calendar, and we have a year to plan.
Yes. With the understanding that there can be some adjustments to the planning calendar. Any other discussion from board members? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Reeves, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our next item of business is Item Number Seven, which is Information. The first item, 7.01, speaks to our next meeting. I think I've explained that during the deliberation portion of our meeting tonight. We will be holding our second budget hearing on Wednesday, March 18th, here at Jones Magna Middle School. That meeting will start at 6:30 PM. Any other information to come from board members or Dr. Smith? Dr. Smith?
Again, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I want to just indicate that we also provided the viewing audience and certainly members of the Hampton City community at large and any particular person who might have interest in FAQ relative to the proposed FY 2021 budget. We're hearing, and we have heard from individuals from the community that they have found that document to be quite helpful in answering questions pertaining to the specific budget as well. And then, we also provided the community with just an overall budget fact sheet as well. So I want to thank members of the team, the division leadership team, and others who certainly participated in providing that information and making it available.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and thank you to your team. And I know the community absolutely depended on that piece because it was so succinct. They could look at it, they could read it, and they could give it back. And I thought that was interesting, especially since they were frequently asked questions that people frequently ask. I know I've seen documents where they say frequently asked questions, and I'm like, I never thought about asking that question. I'm not even interested. But all of the questions were really, really good, and they spoke to the heart of the matter as it relates to the development of this budget. And we also want to thank you, Dr. Cagiano, you and your team, because you all had a lot to do with that as well. So we appreciate that. Any other information from board members? Yes, Dr. Mason?
Well, I would like to congratulate our chairwoman Cherry. She actually held a Tissues for Teachers event on this past Saturday out in front of Kroger Grocery Store, and she collected about eight baskets full of tissues, hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes, and the like for our classrooms. And so, excellent job. And I would like to say, just continue, because we know that this time of year, our classrooms tend to need those types of things. So if anyone wants to donate, please send those things into your school on behalf of our chairwoman, because that was an excellent idea.
Well, I thank you, Dr. Mason. I did that in conjunction with a veteran special education teacher, Michelle Johnson, and it actually came about, one of the, actually Delegate Jawan Ward had mentioned that that's the only complaint she hears about my teacher in Hampton City Schools is they need tissues, nothing else. And actually, at that, we were somewhere, and she was texting her mother, saying, "If you could send something, please send me some tissues and some disinfectant wipes." And we were like, hey, how come we don't do this? And two weeks later, we did it, and this community, I mean, really rallied. We had teachers, Dr. Mason and his wife. His wife, who was a principal in Newport News Public Schools, came out and actually worked with us to do the collection. And then, of course, the manager, assistant manager from Kroger donated all the tissues that they had ordered to Hampton City Schools. And it was fantastic, because Marty Woods with Print Shop was able to send her guys over with a truck to come pick it up from my house. We had a caravan of cars taking that stuff to my house, and they were like, I can't believe this stuff. So Ms. Ann Bane, she's there. She is going to be in charge of distribution. We're going to leave it up to how she sees best. But I can tell you, we had people coming up with tissues, didn't we, Dr. Mason, trying to trade us for hand sanitizer. One lady said, I'm telling you, she said, "I will give you these four boxes of tissues if you give me that one hand sanitizer." And we were saying, man, we'd love to, but we can't do that, because it was donated. So it really was something that was unique, and we're going to be doing that. We're going to make it an annual event.
And let me say, Superintendent, thank you so very much as well. And I met with Ms. Ann Bane today, and so we have a process in place and looking forward to distributing those items to the schools, and they, I know, will be well-received.
And speaking of the process, Ms. Bane, I didn't want to break it to you when I saw you coming in. Some people have stopped by my house and said, "Oh, I forgot." So I've got a trunk full when we leave here. Any other information? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
Yes. I just want to share with you that on Saturday, March 14th, the city will host its 2020 Census Kickoff at the Peninsula Town Center between 1:00 and 3:00 o'clock. And they're encouraging citizens that reside in Hampton to come out and help celebrate us kick off the 2020 Census and register in, because the 2020 Census is very important, as Dr. Smith knows, and we all know that. The number of residents that reside in Hampton, it also depend on how much federal funding you receive.
Exactly.
For the city and also for the schools. So it is very important for our citizens to come out on Saturday between 1:00 and 3:00 at the Peninsula Town Center to help us celebrate and also register for the 2020 Census.
And the healthy families marketing, did the beautiful poster flyer that's out. Lots of talent in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels, because that is a very important event, because, and I'm sure you will understand and correct this as well, but each year, we're undercounted, which means we don't get the money that we should be getting. Someone said, "Well, I don't know if I want all my information out there." And then somebody answered, "Well, it's all over Amazon, so you might as well put it out here so we can get some money." So thanks for reminding all of us for that. Yes, Mr. Powers? Oh, you know you have to close it.
You know, I would like to really just remind everybody, especially seniors, and especially the students out there who might be watching tonight, never let somebody's negativity ever bring you down as a person. Never let somebody's negative thoughts about you, or just negative thoughts in general, or just negative things, just never bring you down as a person, because at the end of the day, everybody is great. Everybody is great in their own individual way. And how great you are isn't truly defined by how much money you have, or, you know, what you might score on a test, something like that. It's truly defined by your actions, you know, who you are as a person, what you do for others. So I just want everybody to never, you know, always appreciate where you come from, who you are, and truly how far you've come as a person at the end of the day, because it's, it's, you know, for me at least, you know, I always try to remember where I've come from, you know, how, not how hard, but, you know, it's, you just got to remember your roots, what you stand for, where you come from. So I just like to put that out there, you know, never let, never let anything keep you down, and never give up. And also, wash your hands, don't touch your face, and eye hand sanitizer.
You always give us the best closeout, and with that said, meeting is adjourned.